Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
And welcome to the Exeter Planning Board meeting of Thursday, September 25, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Nowak Room at the Office Building located at 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. So, my friend, that's where you're sitting tonight. You're at 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. Okay? And I want to start off introducing the members of the board. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board, and I want to thank the Board for acting as they always do in my absence, which I had a good time. So, and to my left is...
Gwen English.
And?
Nancy Belanger, Select Board Representative.
Very good. And our clerk?
John Grudue.
Jen Martell.
Marty Kennedy.
Dean Hubbard.
And Marty, I will announce is now a full-pledged member. So, we have a full board, except for our Vice Chair is not here yet. He was with us this morning, so, anyway, we can go ahead and proceed with the meeting. So, I'm going to hold the minutes till the other items are taken care of, so that you folks can get out of here before we do. So, the continued public hearing and the application of the Exeter Presbyterian Church for site plan review of the proposed construction of additional building, parking, and associated site improvements on the property located at 73 Winter Street. And this is our Vice Chair.
Let me check my name tag.
Who are you?
Aaron Brown.
Thank you very much. It's Aaron Brown over there. Suburban property is located in the C1 Central Area Commercial Zoning District. It's tax map number 73-143 and Planning Board Case Number 25-6. And Carol, do you have anything to start off with?
Yes, thank you. This application was presented at your last meeting on September 11th. At that time, following the presentation, the Board voted to continue the hearing so that you could conduct a site visit, which you did this morning at 8:00. The site visit was attended by, I believe, a majority, if not all, of the Planning Board and the applicant representatives for the applicant. At the last meeting, the applicant is requesting two waivers, one from the requirement for a high-intensity soil survey and one for that prohibition against grading within five feet of the property line. Those were both discussed and reviewed at the last meeting, but no votes were taken. And you have in your packet, or you had in your last packet, letters from Joneson Beach discussing those waivers and the justifications for those. In the memo, there are draft waivers for you to consider, for, I mean motions, for the waiver and for your ultimate decision when you get to that point. So, that is all that I have to say at this moment.
Thank you. We had a nice site walk this morning, so the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Paige Libby with Joneson Beach, here with Skip Phelps from the church as well. Thank you all this morning for joining us at our site walk. There was a couple of questions that were brought up that we just wanted to address right off the bat. The first, I believe, was from you about the Winter Street project. So, I was able to speak with the DPW Director, and my understanding is that there's been a grant awarded to the town. They need to come before the Select Board and present the plans, but there haven't been any plans or survey officially done. But the plans that they have are kind of conceptual at this time, so he did send those to me, so I'll just quickly review where we're located in relation to these. So, this is our property here, and it's my understanding that the sidewalk is proposed to be going down Railroad Ave, and then there will be a crosswalk across Winter Street that will connect to the sidewalk that's already on Winter Street. So, it won't impact the frontage of our parcel.
Okay. So, I was talking about the bump out. So, that, the bump out at the end of Columbus in that area, that's the one I was talking about, not the proposed future one. Yes.
Yep.
Did you talk about that one?
We didn't. It doesn't seem that that's...
I wasn't worried about Railroad Ave.
Okay.
You're not on Railroad Ave.
Yeah. So, these are the plans that he sent me. He didn't seem to think there would be any implications of...
All right.
...of that project. But he was, he did say that there aren't any plans at this time, so that's all the information that we were able to get. Yeah, he didn't, he didn't seem too concerned about it. He is aware that we're...
No, it wasn't Railroad Ave I was concerned about. It's the new bump out that's right next...
Which is further out.
It's right where you are, yeah. But, okay. Thank you for reaching out to me.
Okay, thank you. And then, secondly, we did get some additional dimensions that were asked about during the site walk. So, here in the back, I think somebody asked about the dimensions to the pool. So, that's quite a ways over. It's about seven feet to the concrete pad for the pool off of that property line, and even further off of the fence line, with our new fence being a foot into the property, so about eight feet off of where the fence will go. So, that was the second question. And then, it's a little bit hard to see on this plan, but you can see the trees that we discussed right here. There's three of them, one, two, three in a row. So, where that largest tree falls on this plan is right about here in the very first parking space. And that being said, after we all were able to attend the site walk, Skip and I discussed it, and Skip was able to follow up with the abutter, Wally is his name? Wally, yeah, who is the son of Beverly Vincent, who is the property owner. And Wally is actually wanting those trees to be completely taken out because they're hanging over that rear building, which is kind of a safety issue as well as a liability for the church. But that being said, we are proposing a new tree in that island, which is about six feet off of where the existing tree is today. So, that will, that's planned to replace that tree, but unfortunately, that tree will have to come down. And I think those were all of the topics that were raised today, but we can address any questions that you might have on those items.
We did talk a little about, Aaron, I don't need to speak to you. You were talking about a water garden.
Yeah, I did talk a little bit about potential for rain gardens.
Yeah, yeah, rain gardens are tricky because I think what you're referring to is like a bio-retention system.
A little bit. I mean, that's not to be that sophisticated, honestly. I mean, we've seen things where people just direct gutters and just try to get some greenery going, not just asphalt. I understand the purpose of how you're holding the water on the site, which is critical, but using plants and vegetation to do that can serve that purpose somewhat as well, and kind of using, recycling some of the water coming off the additional rooftop, as well as the existing, I think is something we're trying to encourage. We, as a board, we were pretty active about that a few years back, but we kind of haven't been pushing it as much. It seemed like a potential opportunity there. I wouldn't make it a requirement of a plan. I just wanted to kind of put it out there to the applicant, you know, for future. It's not something you need to get a permit to do later.
Yeah, I think there's certainly opportunity, especially possibly with the gutter that's already there in the front. Maybe we could build like a little garden to put that into. It's tricky with the actual bio-retention systems because they do have quite a wide cross-section, so in order to actually, similar to the pavers, actually. So, in order to meet that separation of water table and then have a depression for the water to sit and infiltrate, we would actually have to bring fill into the site even more than we already are doing in order to get the parking lot or any surfaces to drain to it. So, that makes it a little bit tricky with kind of a retrofit like we're doing here.
Yeah. I also don't think it's fair to talk to you for the first time about that, you know, less than 12 hours ago, so. But in terms of just like the future maintenance of the property, it's something that we try to encourage, just like the tree thing. I mean, it's, you know, it's nice to hear you're adding a tree, you know?
Yeah.
That's a positive.
Was that, that tree was already on your plan, is that correct?
It was.
There's a tubo at the end, so that was there.
Yes. Yeah, it just so happened that it was pretty close to where that existing tree is today when we actually overlaid the existing with the proposed to see kind of where it landed.
Yeah, and just remind me, the tree that you're taking down is definitely on this lot?
Yes, yeah.
Because you talked to the son of the owner, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear that I don't think he's on the deed, so.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. Yeah, it seems that he's designated, she's designated him as her...
I don't even believe we all...
Yeah, that's where I was going, thank you. Yeah, but it's fine. We don't even have to pursue it. It's on your land, but yeah, it's legal, you're right. It would have to be done that way.
Yeah, those are about, the trees are about six feet into our property.
Is the new tree going to be protected in some fashion? Because I know it's going to, it's, but fact, just the fact that it's sticking out.
The new tree?
Yes, that's, it makes it...
Like from cars?
Yes.
We don't show it being protected at this time? Let me see how far back off the pavement is.
Just my experience landscaping at a church, somebody drives over it several times.
Which one is that, Lang? What tree are you talking about?
The one they're going to plant.
Oh, in front of the church?
Yeah.
Oh, in front of the church? I thought you meant the one in the island, sorry.
Yeah, the one that you're planting.
Well, there's a few trees that we're planting, actually. I was just, I was mainly talking about...
One in the back.
The one in the back in this island.
Yes.
And I can flip over to that later.
That's the one I'm speaking of. Just because it's kind of going to be hanging out there by itself, I just would suggest some sort of initial protection as it's planted.
Oh, as it's planted? Yeah, we can, yeah, we can certainly do something while it's planted.
I would just suggest it for the...
I thought you meant permanently, yes. We can, yeah, we can put some kind of fencing around it.
Initially.
Yeah.
Because it's, somebody's going to hit it, sorry. It's going to happen.
I have a question. It's actually more of a point. I'm just curious, who put the minutes together from the site walk?
I did.
You did this? Some darn good work, young fellow.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever seen such detailed minutes on a site walk.
Well, that's another...
You're raising the bar, is that what we're doing here? And your memory, did you ever, were you tape recording us?
No.
Well, I'm telling you.
I was in a car right afterwards.
I was thinking it was John, but now, wow.
I delivered a signed sheet to Barbara who wasn't there yet.
Good work, Lang. Tip of the cap to you.
Let's recognize our planning.
Wow. I couldn't have done that without a tape recorder, so.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, could you just maybe talk a little bit about the days and hours of activity of the church, people walking through the parking lot, driving, as well as the days and hours of activity at the bowling alley? So, do they coincide? How does that work?
Do you want to speak to that? Yeah, Skip will speak to that.
Happy to speak to it. We've had a great relationship with Rob Figaro with the bowling alley. The, you know, Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings are two major times when we have not the capacity, but, you know, a number of people for a Sunday morning service. There's a Sunday evening service that's attended, but, you know, it's still not, we're not looking at anything close to three-quarters full. So, so far, over these years since, I think, 2009, working with Rob, it has seemed to have just worked out. When he has his events, he's got people who park over in our lot, and we have no issue with it. He lets, he lets his people know that Wednesday evening, we got a full house, and they don't, you know, we just, all I can say is we've never had a problem. So, it's pretty much a good neighbor situation, and yeah, you're probably right. At some point, there could be a case where we both have events, but I just don't envision when that would be. I mean, it's not something we could predict. It could happen, of course.
When you say you have a full house, does that mean you're using your, the bowling alley parking, or does that mean you're using all of your...
So far, we have not used, well, occasionally, you mean, and his designated parking on his site. There might be a couple of people on Sunday morning who've come in late. They might park there. It might be easier than parking farther down on the street. That's the other option, is to park on the street, but we have not used a street parking in any of these calculations for spaces.
Nope. Go ahead.
Thank you, Lang. I'm going to circle back to the trees again, and I just, could you, could you remind me exactly what is happening on the west side of the building with that outgoing lane?
That, so that's just a one-way lane. It's there today. So, we've proposed the lane on the east side to remain as a two-way. That lane on the west side will remain as a one-way out only, just as it is today, but it's, it'll probably be used less than the other, the other driveway.
Are you resurfacing, are you planning on resurfacing it?
Yes.
You are, but not widening it?
No, not widening it.
The reason I ask is that there are seven, and they're obviously purposely planted trees, there are about, maybe there are seven of them that go about to the end of what is going to be your, maybe not quite as far as the end of the new building, the north end of the building. And I don't know what kind of trees they are, but they're healthy. They offer a nice visual barrier. They're offering shade to the west side of the church. It just seems like a shame to have to take those out, and I don't know, I guess it's a two-part question. I'm not really sure what the purpose is of the, of the chain link fence or any fence there. If the trees were left, it kind of forms...
So, you're saying in this area?
Yeah.
I would imagine those trees could stay.
Those trees, those trees.
Yeah, there's no, there's no reason why those trees...
There's no reason. I was under the assumption that all those were coming out.
No, those could stay because that's, that section's really not being, it'll be resurfaced, and some utilities will be run up that way, but it won't need to be completely reconstructed. So, those trees could stay.
That's good.
And the other thing there is there's no parking up there.
Right.
Anything in the back is to get the space for the parking.
Right.
The tree in the front that you are planting, that's the sweet gum tree, is, I'm worried that that's not going to survive being used with that area being used as a snow storage area. It's going to get snow plowed into it and probably will get plowed, and I don't know if you can potentially move it over toward the sidewalk and have it more in front of the church and set off to the side. I'm looking at the landscape plan.
Yes, that's definitely doable.
I just don't think it's going to be happy with snow being piled up on it. I did, at the site walk, I did question whether there was a way to add maybe another tree. I don't know, I don't know how much wiggle room you have between the parking lot that Shooter's Pub is using and your new, the center parking lot that you have in back of the church. Is there a way that you can put some kind of a, I know you're, I know you're looking for parking, but is there a way that you can get a nice tree at the end of that parking area?
Wouldn't it interfere with the two big trees that are over there?
Right there.
So, you're saying in the back?
Yeah.
Or further over here?
No, just to break up that expansive parking, so it could go, you know, I don't know if it would fit at, like, at the very end of that center parking lot.
I think that would, Rob would, I mean, that's going to hang over into his, your garden.
The tree?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking it would be closer to the church, like near your parking area, near there, right there.
Yeah, so that's an area where we actually originally had a light pole, and we were told to remove it by the fire department, just because they'll use that area as part of their kind of swing. So, they didn't want anything in that area, unfortunately. They wanted us to kind of make it just a striped island instead of an actual island.
Is that as far north as it can be? Is the, is the parking, I'm just, now I'm looking at the plan and wondering if you could put a planting at the south end of that lot and have it kind of between the church and the parking area? But you'd have to move the parking up a little bit to make that...
So, like right in here?
Yeah. I don't know. It's just a, I mean, I know, I reckon you've, now you're taking that beautiful big tree down between the pool and your, your lot, and it's just such a huge expanse of pavement and pervious...
The trees on the other side stay, and they're even larger and...
Yeah, the trees. Yeah, so there's, there's a couple, there's several trees on this side that'll stay. Looking at this area, it's, it would be a little bit tricky to fit anything in there just because that, so on the, let me switch it back to C2. So, the dimension between the building and the front parking space there is, on this end, it's about six feet. On this end, it's about eight feet, so we would have a little bit of room to lose there possibly, but only about two feet. So, I don't know if that's wide enough to actually put a tree in there.
Talk about why we wanted to keep as much on the site as possible.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we're trying to fit as much parking on the site as we can.
Yeah, I realize that. I realize that. Is that just a walk-through? That's not a drive, that's not a passageway for vehicles, is it?
No, it's a walk-through for access to the two doors in the back.
Okay. Hmm. I'll chew on that for a minute.
Okay.
Is that an actual paved walkway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, those will be entries into the sanctuary.
So, the parking is primarily on the crosshatch part of the plan there?
Yeah, that's the bio-retention. Yeah. Of course, you're showing it that way.
So, you're on the right page for my question.
Oh, good.
So, right now, with Shooter's Pub and the bowling alley parking lot?
Yes.
They use the gravel, the, the, not gravel, sorry, the dirt area, right? So, people can go in and out. Now, you're going to open that up. So, you're going to have two ways of traffic on the side and back here and over here for park. Does that mean the people who are parking in the church parking lot, because it's all going to be one now, are going to be driving through Shooter's parking lot?
Skip can answer.
What we've worked out with Rob is we plan to put a plastic chain, something across there, especially during our higher events to where, to prevent exactly that.
Yes, thank you. I was concerned about becoming horrible like the fact the roadway.
Cut through, yeah.
Yeah.
Where would that be? Where would the chain be? Could you? Okay.
Right there.
Between, yeah.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be a whole lot, but at least to stop...
Yes.
...traffic both ways there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, potential cut through, by the way.
That's what is a concern of mine with kids and people at church and other activities that was a concern, so thank you. Okay, my question's done.
Another quick one. How important is the berm on the east side of the lot? It's not, it's not much of a berm, and I don't know what its value is, and if it does have significant value, I just can, I'm a little concerned that it may not be enough. It's almost like it just sort of happened by, I don't know, over time?
Over time, debris getting built up against the fence type of thing.
Exactly.
Yeah. No, it's not, it's not too significant because each, the parking lot obviously is fairly flat. It'll stay that way in the proposed condition, so we're kind of mimicking the proposed, the existing condition in the proposed condition to continue to infiltrate the runoff on-site.
Okay, all right.
This morning in the site walk, you were talking about the rain coming off, the water coming off the new portion of the structure and being piped to the parking areas themselves to be absorbed in the earth. Is there any detail that's shown on the plan, or is it just, I was not here last time, I apologize, but...
I don't think we have that noted on the plan, actually, but we can add that to the final set. We will need to address some of the remaining underwood comments, so we can, we can add that note.
Because you got to go across the walkway somehow or under it, so, yeah.
Yeah, so you don't want all the water just pouring off, yep.
Thank you.
What is the shape of the roof? Is it a hip roof or is it a cable roof or a hip roof? I had a question about the blockage of the bowling alley parking. On one hand, you're saying you can use that, but if you have the rope there, doesn't that prevent the use of the bowling alley parking?
We would take that. We would take that. If we're going to use the overflow into Rob, into the bowling alley, Sunday morning, we're going to take that down.
Okay.
We will use it at the end of, on our deacons, when we're done with our service, we'll put it up. If Rob needs to use it on a Tuesday night, if he needs to use ours, he'll be responsible to take it down and put it back up.
Okay.
We don't, we're in full agreement with you, we're not trying to make a throughway through there.
Yeah, so if I could just add that, so that rope, whatever you want to call it, is really so that cars can't go. People can still use Rob's parking lot and vice versa, and then can still access on the building.
From the other side, okay. In the site walk, we talked about replacing the existing fence on the back between the bowling alley and your parking lot there.
Just more for aesthetics, I mean, if you're going to put a fence down one side and then come and you've got a wood blockade fence, it's not going to be that attractive, so you would want to be at least consistent. And I think, rather than that wood stockade, we might think of something else that looks a little better.
Yeah, it would be nice to show that on the plan.
We didn't have it noted to be replaced, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, there's a, I didn't remember the jog there in that back fence. If you replace it, will the jog go away, or is it necessary?
I don't think so, because I believe, Paige, you can correct me, but when they were looking at the turning radius for your trucks, needed all the space we could get.
Yeah, okay.
Rob would probably agree with you, that'd be nice to-
Give him a little more space.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make a suggestion on that. The change from style on fencing, I think, would affect that business. I don't, I know if I was running that business, I'd probably prefer a stockade style, just because it creates that visual barrier and you're kind of trying to create an environment with your business that you can control versus something else, and the impact between the two businesses or the two entities is separated a little better with stockade. So I think what I heard at the site walk was that it was going to be more of a material change versus a replacement. Probably in this stage of this plan, the impact on the butter is probably the more important thing to me. So I don't know where we want to go with that.
Rob's not here, but we have discussed that, and he had indicated that that blockade fence is not in the best of shape. And he had already said that, you know, at some point, we'll have to agree. But I think the whole plan was to do, to make that look a little better than what it looked like.
Yeah, and I think I just leave it flexible like that, would be my preference. You know, we don't love to leave those dangling things out there, but at the same time, I think it is a very amicable relationship between the parties. He came here and spoke glowingly, which we don't often see. So not only did he speak glowingly, he took the time to come and do it. A lot of people, by default, don't come if they have nothing but good things to say, unfortunately. So I'm going to say, I'm very comfortable with you guys working that out, but I wouldn't be comfortable dictating from here to what you should do without him, his input.
Right.
You know?
So you're saying, don't make it part of the plan?
I would not, I leave it off.
If they decide to do it, they decide to do it.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be part of a site plan. You can talk to the town and change your fence, you probably don't even need a permit to do it, you know what I mean? So just leave it out, you know? I think, with the relationship of the parties, I think you just let it go.
Well, they're the ones that are going to be there, and we're not going to be there, so we always turn to the neighbors to talk, yeah.
I think it was mentioned before, the original lighting plan.
Right.
He had that one light pole that was going to flood his area. He asked us, he said, can you move it? It took Paige five minutes to move it back and put it, and actually helped out with the turning radius for the fire trucks, too. So it was a win-win.
Yeah. I think it's great you guys are sharing the parking needs as well, that's something we encourage, because there definitely are times when one is being utilized and not the other. And that's probably more often than not, actually, so, yeah, I think it's really good.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. Where does the snow go on the west side of the building when you plow? What happens with that?
Do you know, Rob actually plows for them as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he trucks most of the snow off, I think.
That's a good person to have on your side.
It has worked well, I know you have a hard time believing it.
No, not at all.
No, I don't, I'm not having a hard time.
I know Rob.
Yeah, I mean, this has been-
You're very lucky.
Working relationship between us.
But does it, does he, does he go the wrong way up that one way and put it, I'm just curious where it all goes?
When he plows-
That's a lot of snow.
No, he just comes down that way. Normally, they do not go backwards on that, he's pushed it over into the front.
Into the front, yeah.
Or truck it.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm a little concerned about snow storage, but if we keep having winters the way we have been, that may not be an issue, sadly.
Yeah, it sounds like he's pretty accustomed to trucking most of the snow outside, as is anyway.
So it's a standard?
It's already kind of a standard practice if there's a big storm, a snow event.
Okay.
So I'd like to point out to our scouts that are aware of this this evening, that this is a great relationship. You guys must talk about cooperation and working together and solving problems together. So this is something that really is super. Thank you.
It was a great experience for them, eighteen of them were here two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, missed it.
They all walked out of here with different takes on what happens on a planning board.
Questions you said, and that's great.
It's a learning, teaching, learning situation, I just want to point that out. It's wonderful that they're here, really is.
I heard most of them asking what an easement was after what they had to sit through for the hearing.
That's a good question, that's an excellent question.
Most adults don't know what an easement is.
I know that, yeah.
Okay, if we don't leave any other questions, I think we could-
I have a couple of questions. So the planting islands that are in the parking lot, those don't have a curb or anything, they're just sort of flush with the pavement?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I sort of echo Lang's sentiment that, you know, this is a, not necessarily that it's because it's a church parking lot and people just drive wherever they want, but it's a tight parking lot, right? Like, it's not your standard grocery store, drive, you know, giant parking spaces and big aisles and everything. This is a tight condition, and, you know, those planting islands are going to get driven over. Like, that's just, they are. So, I mean, have you considered, especially given that the edges of the sites have that berm, have you considered curbing those planting islands to add a little more protection? And then your grade can kind of match up with that grade on the side?
With the curbing?
Yeah.
We could think about it, I know that when we spoke with the fire department, they weren't super excited about having curbing on the site, just because, like you said, it also is tight for them pulling in and out of there. So they were concerned about possibly hitting the curbing. Where we have the plantings, let me switch back to the landscape and plan. So like, this one, for example, has a striped area right in front of it and to the right-hand side of it. So we kind of put them in areas where they would be a little bit protected by having not a parking space immediately next to them. Same thing with this one in the back here. And then this one, even though it's near a parking space, it's near this kind of exit-only. So this is a little bit wider for somebody, say, backing out of the space to turn and go that way, if they do choose to go that way. So we kind of tried to strategically place the islands as well to avoid them getting hit.
And one of the reasons we wanted to keep as much parking on our site as possible is just for these kids. If we start taking spaces away, you're going to have people starting to park on the street, and then you've got traffic back and forth, foot traffic back and forth across the street. The goal from day one was to try to maximize the onsite parking to where families can get out of their cars, walk in if it's raining, walk into the back of the church, you're not coming back across that street. So with this plan, there's no consideration of street parking. Now, it will happen, we're not, no one's kidding ourselves, but at least between the bowling alley and our property, we can handle the parking for the full profession.
Yeah, I think that's great, and I always love a shared parking lot. You know, you're maximizing the use of the impervious surface instead of, you know, mine and yours. It's just an efficient way to do things, I think it's great. I think my only other, so my only other question was about the edging detail at the permeable paving. So that does look like a flush curb, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, yeah, it's basically to keep the pavers in place versus having them kind of move against the asphalt, because they can kind of push and move things around if there's nothing to actually hold them in place.
Right, is that going to go around the backside, too, like, along the vegetation?
It only needs to be really between the pavement and the, and the pavers.
Okay, so you're not going to do it from, between the unit pavers and the vegetated buffers on the sides?
Correct.
They won't have an edge restraint, so what prevents the pavers from moving into kind of loosening up?
I guess it would, yes, it would, it goes all the way around, yeah.
It goes all the way around, okay.
Sorry, I was not understanding the question at first.
And then my only other comment is just on the tree selection. I, no, I like all the trees selected. The, my only concern, back to kind of the protection and the trees might get hit. So I noticed that your landscape architect specified Nissa, which is a tree that you can't really get in a big size, so it's a two-and-a-half-inch caliper, which is really like a small tree. It's almost like, if you see it, you almost may think it's like a sapling or a young tree, so it really is going to need some, maybe some stakes or even like a little snow fence around it for the first few years until it can really grow enough that if a snowplow or even the, you know, the plow doesn't even need to hit it, but just pushing the heavy snow hitting it, it'll knock it over. So it really needs to get staked and protected, or put in a bigger tree.
I was going to say, we could probably just ask her to switch, I think it's two of them there?
Yeah.
To switch those for larger trees, because we do have the space also in those two areas. So it probably would make sense just to switch those for a couple larger trees.
Okay.
Does the board have a preference on species, or?
No, I mean, I would say, I don't like to, like, name a species, but something, definitely I would prefer something native, and I think the neighbor would probably prefer something that doesn't drop-
Yes.
-fruit, nuts, messy stuff.
No black walnuts, huh?
No black walnuts.
Shank mark hickory, yeah. Anything else?
You taking public comment?
Oh, yes, we should, anybody in the public, excuse me. You open this hearing to the public, I forgot my role, but he keeps me going straight. Anybody like to speak tonight? Please step up to the microphone and let your thoughts be known. Please introduce yourselves so we all know who's speaking, especially our viewers at home, so they can throw popcorn at you.
I am Brandy Small, and I volunteer at the church with the kids' clubs and things. And my only comment would be that we, if we can keep the parking on the property and not having the kids run across the street, I think it's just, it's a better situation there. So that's kind of my thoughts and priority on what we've been discussing.
Well, I think that's the plan for the plan, yeah. And I'm glad you recognized that potential problem, because I'm sure there's more traffic than I know is on that street.
It's a tough road still.
It is, yeah.
They've talked about changing the other end of that intersection on Front Street, but it still hasn't happened, so.
Hasn't happened yet.
It's in the queue.
Want to go to waivers?
All right, seeing that nobody in the public, excuse me, seeing that the public has finished speaking, I believe, one last chance, then I'll close the public and bring the case back to the board. So scouts, that means you can't speak anymore. It's our business now. Okay, anybody like to talk about the requested waivers?
Sure. What are you going to make her do for it?
Well, we need to have them reviewed, even though it's in the plans and mining, so.
Yeah, okay.
Could you-
You want me to speak to the waivers?
To that, yes, please.
Sure. Yeah, so the first waiver was for the high-intensity soil survey, which is a requirement of the site plan regulation. So in this particular case, we requested not to do one, just because the real purpose of it is to determine the, what's called the hydrologic soil group, and that's for drainage modeling. But that being said, the hydrologic soil group, if sites are impervious, doesn't change based on the soil type. So where the site has quite a bit of impervious surface, it wouldn't make a difference in our drainage modeling. And that being said also, we did test pits, several test pits on the site, and infiltration testing, so we have a good idea of the soils regardless of whether or not we did the hydrologic or the site-specific soil mapping. That's the first one. And then the second one is the setback to grading of five feet. So with the site, we have grading, I believe it's within three feet of the property lines on both sides. And that's just because we needed to be able to fit the full width or the full-length parking spaces, I should say, as well as the full-width aisles. And it just so happened that it was, the site's the perfect width to fit all of that. But if we had to meet the five feet, we would have to lose a whole row of parking, which is, again, quite a few spaces. I think it's ten on one side.
We need to go on those five criteria?
I don't think you do. Going to motion?
Sure, thank you, by the way.
Okay, I'll make a motion regarding the High Intensity Soil Survey HIS waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Exeter Prebestrian Church for a waiver from Section 7.4.1.0 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to provide high-intensity soil survey information on a site plane be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let's do this. Oh, we got to do a hand vote. No?
Voice.
Voice, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
If the video comes up, they can't see the hands.
Okay.
Just do both.
All right, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, any abstentions, vote carries, thank you.
Ready for the next one?
Yes, I'm ready for the next one.
Next waiver motion, Erosion and Sediment Control Standards waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Exeter Prebestrian Church for a waiver from Section 9.3.6 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to allow grading within five feet of the property line be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And I just want to say one quick comment on that.
Yes.
I discuss this every time we get this waiver.
Yes.
We get it, I don't want to say with every plan, but it feels like more often than not. And I do think the reason it's in the books is just so it alerts us to doing work very close to the property line, so that's why it's still in the books. But you probably know, I don't think we've ever denied it, so.
And it also informs the others that they have permission to do that.
That's right.
I think it's a good thing to have.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. All right, we're getting close, scouts, watch now. Now I'm going to ask for a site plan motion.
Thank you, I, yeah.
Thank you, Gwen.
I don't want them giggling.
We have fun.
Hey, spell my name.
Do we want to talk about conditions before Erin makes the motion?
Yes, we should.
Can I suggest one or ask a question about one? To make sure that we have as a condition that the draft date that we were provided on September 11, 2025 be recorded? Because that's part of the plan, right? It's not recorded, we got a draft date that hasn't been executed yet or recorded. So shouldn't that be a condition that they record the draft easement? Or no? You look for-
I'm not sure, just, what is it you're, specifically talking about?
It's part of the package.
Yes.
And it's an easement, and it's part of this plan, so should that be a condition? Because it's, it's a draft, it's never been recorded.
Ah.
So I think that if we use that easement as part of our discussion and decision-making process, it should probably be recorded.
Can we discuss it now? Can we discuss it now? I don't think we've discussed the easement. I don't remember discussing the easement. I don't remember discussing the easement.
I talked about it.
Okay, I'm telling you, I don't remember. So can we discuss it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
I'm saying I don't remember discussing it, so I don't have to discuss it.
He was very busy being chair.
I guess.
Okay.
No, I, you're going to make a condition, I'd like to discuss it.
Yes. Well, that's the purpose of having this discussion.
Exactly.
Okay.
Trying to review it. Do you know where it is in the packet?
Yes. No, it's in, it was in the one from September 11.
Is it, this?
Does it say easement on the top? Yes.
The parking easement.
Yep.
It's in the, it's kind of in the back section. It's about two-thirds of the way through.
Okay.
And it's right out, it's with the July 15 letter.
That's warranted deed. Okay, I'll find it. Yeah, there it is. Parking easement. Okay.
The draft that we were giving while everyone's reading it, that still stands, right? Nothing's going to.
I don't think it's going to rise now.
Right. Okay, thank you.
If it's possible, if we, or if we do make that a condition, is it possible to have it be prior to building permit versus prior to signing of the plans?
Oh, yeah. I, I just didn't know if we needed to add it in there as a condition.
Yeah, that would be our only comment on it. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
So this is a matter of giving to the county and reg, and reporting it.
I mean, all of their, so if, while they're reading, if I can speak on it.
Why don't you?
I, I don't really see it as a necessity, but because it's part of our packet, I wanted to ask the question. All the parking numbers are contained on-site as-is. So this is more just overflow for Shooter's Pub in the Bolin Alley and for the church. And it's their private agreement, right? But because it's part of our packet, I wanted to bring up whether or not it should be necessary to report.
What's the downside? I don't see why.
I don't think there is a downside, but.
But I see where it might not be required, but if we do it, like you said, there's no downside.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess the downside for the applicant would be if, for whatever reason, it doesn't get finalized. Does that mean that their plans are no longer?
Well.
I mean, are we, are we setting them up?
It is.
Is it a requirement for us to, is the easement like a requirement?
No, no.
Yeah, so.
It's not a full requirement for their parking numbers, but it is, it's part of our packet. And it, I remember it as part of our discussion at the last meeting. Because I brought it up. I wanted to know if it was a draft or if it was recorded because we didn't have a book or page number. And I, we asked about it this morning at the site block.
So I guess, I guess my question is for you, if it's not ever recorded, does that, does that change your vote?
Of course, no.
Okay.
My question was simply, part of the packet, part of the conversation.
Technical question.
It's a technical.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's in the record, in my opinion, so I don't think it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in, it's, it's in the planning board record.
If, if they went to get this signed and something changed, we'd have to have them come back here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would have to.
Yes, so.
Okay.
That's, that's my only concern, and it's certainly an out there what if. Where it's not, this is very different than the other easement we were discussing with another case.
Yes.
This is very different. The relationship is very different.
Mm-hmm.
I think it probably is.
Leave it between the parties?
I think so, Nancy. Just, that's why I wanted to talk about it because I didn't remember really getting into it.
No, that's fine. We didn't really get into it like we have in past.
And I think it's almost like they could do this with just a handshake, you know?
Or they could record it on their own. It doesn't have to be a condition.
I do think it's good practice that if it's in front of us, that it does become official, given that it's a non-required.
Right.
Additional information.
Yes. The parking's not a requirement. They're on-site.
I mean, if this is, if this was something that in the past, a minor thing was changed on this, and then they went to record it, it's probably something that our board would defer to the planning department to just deal with it and not make them come back here. But it's such, but if we say they have to record it, I think we don't allow that to happen. So that'd be my concern.
Well, it was my question, but for the record, I don't think we need to.
It's a good question.
I wanted to discuss it before we voted.
Carol, do you have any opinion on it?
I think that if they have met all of their parking requirements on their own site, then I think this does not need to be a condition of the approval.
While you have the microphone, could you go down through the other?
Oh, the other conditions?
Standard, yes, we always like to listen to those.
Certainly.
It's storytime.
Get out your, get out your blankie, R.
Okay, the, the standard conditions of approval. An electronic as-built plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The plan must be in a DWG or DXF file format and in NAD 1983 State Plane New Hampshire FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. A pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. The SWIP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, if applicable, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Three third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Four, the stormwater system operation and maintenance report in the Stormwater Inspection and Maintenance Manual shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January 31. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Five, any applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Six, a restoration and erosion control surety in an amount and form reviewed and approved by the town planner in accordance with section 12 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations shall be provided prior to any site work. Seven, excuse me, all landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Eight, all outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. And lastly, number nine, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using PTAP, online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submittal must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Thank you. Now, did we have any others that we wanted to add to that? We've discussed several things, and you said we'll do that. Right.
The, the two trees, the two, two and a half inch caliper tupulos, can we add that as a condition?
Okay.
That they are substituted with a three-inch caliper tree?
Okay.
Of their choice, yeah.
That would not be number 10, I believe. Gwen, you're thinking?
I don't know if we need to make this a condition, but the, keeping the trees on the west side of the, of the building, on the fence line, I don't know if that was.
Yeah, I think that's clear. They're staying.
Yep.
And did you want to add a condition about shifting the tree in the front out of the storage?
Yeah, that would be great.
How would you word that?
The, now I've got my plan set. I think it's a, I think that's a sweet gum as well. The sweet gum that is in the entranceway on the east side of the church be moved to closer to the sidewalk that leads up to the front of the church. That's.
That's a 11, I believe. All set?
On a motion or do you want?
Go for it.
Go for it, yes.
Your turn. I don't want to say that word.
I move at the request of Exeter Presbyterian Church, Planning Board Case Number 25-6 for site plan approval be approved with the, with the conditions as outlined by our interim town planner, Carol Ogilvy.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Now, for the information for our scouts, this whole thing sometimes is called a boilerplate. That means the same words are used every project, project to be approved. The requirements that have to happen. And then to be sure that some of the things we discussed are not adverting yet are numbers 10 and 11 that we discussed. They have to be done in order for this project to go ahead. And that's before I sign the plans to give a final approval. Just for your information, in some time, you might be able to see that list somewhere because it's not, it doesn't disappear. It's part of the plan. One deals with stormwater. Just to show, let, speaking of nature and, and stormwater is a big problem everywhere. It has to be managed. And part of the plan here is to keep the water that's coming off your building, not going to the neighbor's yard, but staying in your yard and filtering down into the earth. That's the design that's been put forth, has been proven as a successful method of handling stormwater at the University of New Hampshire. They have a whole program about stormwater management, and we've been able to be up there. But anyway, just had to throw in my two bits. That's all.
And if you need to remember anything he said, it's on camera. So you can watch the, you can note it on camera. Oh, my God. Yes. So watch the meeting again and take notes.
Okay, I got to call a vote here. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You got it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yay.
Yay.
We have other business to conduct, so just quietly.
That was painful, that.
And don't start talking here and cheering, but when you're out in front of the building, say yay. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is.
You.
Application of Jacqueline and A, Jacqueline A. LeBachi for a shortland, shoreland conditional use permit, CUP, to permit the proposed construction of a 230 square foot addition to an existing residence located at 4 Partomel Road, along with 230 square foot driveway expansion within the town's 150 shoreland protection district. Several properties located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, this tax map parcel number 101-2, and its planning board case 25-7. And is this case ready to be heard?
And before you start.
It is.
Chair, I'm going to recuse.
Thank you. Carol, could you start us off, please?
Absolutely. Okay. So this, this application is necessary because the majority of the parcel, with the exception of the frontage, is located within the 150-foot shoreland protection conservation overlay district. So we have received the complete application with, with plans and supporting documents. Those were received back in August, and you have received those as part of your, as part of your packet. I did review all of that information, and I find that the application is complete for the board to hear the case. The applicant did appear before the Conservation Commission at September 9 meeting to present their, their case, and the commission voted unanimously in support of the shoreland conditional use permit, as proposed, with several recommendations. And those are outlined in the memo from the sustainability planner, Kristin Murphy, and you have that memo in your packet. So that is, that sums up the application. There is a draft motion here when you get to that point for you to consider when you're ready to take a vote.
Thank you. So first, I need a motion to open the case, please.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Ayes also work. Checking to see if anybody's listening. Those opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. John Lorden with Beals Associates here tonight representing the applicants, Jackie and Ryan LeBrec. What's existing is a half an acre lot. There's a home. There's a home that's currently existing on the property. And one little unique thing about this property is there's an easement on here for an electric building. You can see that there's a paved driveway in and a turnaround area, and that is all within this, the shoreland of the Exeter River.
So is that a town building or a utility building? Utility building, okay. Yep.
What's proposed here in blue is a 230 square foot building addition. In green is a 230 square foot driveway expansion. And then in red is 199 square feet of temporary disturbance just for construction. The remainder of the house, the yard, is going to remain as-is. This is a very nice, level backyard, and then it does begin to slope its mature trees and woods as it heads down towards the river. There is a stone drip edge along the back of the house, and we would be proposing to extend that along the, the back of the addition as well. That's really it. That's everything I wanted to discuss, and be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Questions? Thoughts?
What, just curious what the, the reasoning is behind extending the driveway. Is that going?
So it's a, it's a drive under garage right now.
Oh.
And there, the addition will be raised above. Below, that will be an additional little bay for storage, a lawnmower or something like that. So the, the driveway does have to get expanded so that something can drive in.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to read the letter from the Conservation Commission?
Yes, please read the letter because that's a part of the.
Okay.
Conditions of approval. And you all know about those now.
All right. So September 11, 2025, to the Exeter Planning Board from Kristin Murphy on behalf of the Exeter Conservation Commission. Subject, Shoreland CUP application. Project information for Partomel Road, Exeter, New Hampshire, tax map parcel number 101-2, CC review date 7/8/25, Planning Board Case Number 25-7. The Conservation Commission reviewed the Shoreline Conditional Use Permit application at their meeting on September 9 following the presentation with reference to the NHDES Shoreland Best Manager Practices. Ooh, I don't know how to read that. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.des.nh.gov/sites/g/files EHBEMT341 forward slash files forward slash documents forward slash 2020-01 forward slash SP dash 5 dot PDF. In the town's restrictions on the use of fertilizer in the shoreline district, see zoning ordinance 9 dot 3 dot 4 dot F dot 12, the Conservation Commission voted unanimously as follows. They have reviewed the Shoreline Conditional Use Permit application and are in support of the application as proposed with the following recommendations, recommendation the applicant. Follow best manager practices in the shoreline buffer zone. Maintain the forested buffer in the condition it is in now and not contribute additional nitrogen to the district such as from the use of fertilizers. Signed, Kristin Murphy.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. I just want to say it's, that's obviously in support of this. I, I think we generally have put a lot of weight on their opinions.
Yes, we do.
I like to thank them for their work.
Any other comments or? Would anybody in the public like to speak? If no, please come forward and introduce yourselves so our viewers at home will know who's speaking. Again, if you'd like to speak, it's an opportunity to do that. Seeing none, then I'll close the public session and bring it back to the board so we make a decision.
Should we have Carol read? Are there any, any conditions, probably not, that Carol needs to read?
Carol, does this mean there are all those same conditions?
Yeah.
That you read once?
I'm, I'm sorry, no, no, those conditions that I read for the other application wouldn't apply to this one.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. It's always a good question.
Yeah. Do you want a motion?
Sure, yes, I'd love a motion.
Okay. After reviewing the criteria for a shoreland conditional use permit, I move at the request of Jacqueline LeBrecq, planning board case number 25-7, for a conditional use permit be approved with the conditions as outlined from Kristin Murphy and the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I call for a vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, now, the application of Eversource Energy for a wetlands conditional use permit, CUP, for routine maintenance and work on the existing H141ACR115, lowercase K capital V, transmission line. The proposed work will be contained within the existing cleared utility right-of-way, R O W, off the Old Town Farm Road. Sub Unit property is located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, tax map parcels number 28-6 and 29-32, its planning board case number 25-8, and I would ask Carol if that is ready to be heard.
It is.
Thank you. Could we have a motion, please, to open this case?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Nays? Abstentions? Carol, did you have anything to start off with?
Yes, thank you. So this is an application that is necessary because the work that they're proposing does impact the Wetlands Conservation District. They submitted their applications, plans, and supporting documents in, in August, and you have those as part of your packet. I did review everything that was submitted, and I do find that the application is complete for the board to hear the case. They did appear before the Conservation Commission, also at the September 9th, 2025 meeting, to present their application, and the commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. And you also have a memo from the Sustainability Planner Kristin Murphy that describes their, their decision, which is in support of this. And finally, there is also in your memo a draft motion when you are ready to take a vote on this.
Thank you. Your turn now.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jacob Kowakiewski from Eversource Licensing and Permitting. I'm joined by my colleagues here. I'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Stephanie Gardner. I'm a product engagement specialist with Eversource.
And I'm Tracy Sethalter. I work with TRCM, an environmental consultancy project.
Thank you.
So this project is likely, and I apologize, we don't have a plan for this project today.
You're right.
This part is likely something very similar to, that you've seen along our circuits over the last several years wherein we routinely inspect our existing infrastructure, and as potential defects or deficiencies in that infrastructure are identified, we scope those for replacement. In the application for you this evening, you have two structures located in the town of Exeter, Exeter, that are part of a much larger project that spans from Sandown, Fremont, some access through Brentwood, and then lastly, on the easternmost end of the project in Exeter. This project will involve replacement of two-pole H-frame transmission structures and replacing them in kind with two-pole H-frame structures made out of weathered steel. This is a kind of a pre, pre-rusted, if you, if you put it that way, have a nice patina on. The structures will be replaced. The existing conductor and static wire will, will remain. So the construction, construction process entails erecting the new replacement structure within about five to 10 feet of the existing. Once that pole, the poles are fully in the ground and completed, the, the existing wire will be transferred over before that current existing wooden structure is removed and disposed of offsite. To gain access from Old Town Farm Road, there is a pre-existing gravel access road secured with forestry gate. Already on that existing access, we do propose to utilize the existing access to the greatest extent possible. Wetlands are proposed to be crossed utilizing our typical four-by-16-foot timber frame. Vet matting is, not timber frame, timber matting. Vet matting is proposed to be removed once all the work is completed. In terms of permitting, starting at the federal level, will be submitting for a coverage underneath the EPA Construction General Permit. Part of that permit coverage is a weekly inspection during construction pursuant to the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which was referenced early here tonight for the other project. Those inspections will proceed through the closeout of construction until the site is revegetated. Also, at the federal level, we'll be submitting for a New Hampshire general permit through the Army Corps of Engineers through their self-verification process. At the state level will be, we actually already have approval from New Hampshire DES for statutory permit by notification across all towns, Exeter included, for, for this project. We're here for, here before you tonight for approval at the local level to temporarily impact the Wetland Conservation Overlay District as part of this project. And I did speak very quickly, so I'll pause for any questions at this point. I will add, however, that as part of the statutory permit by notification, did have an extensive consultation with New Hampshire Fish and Game. Typical cast of characters for species of concern with the department, primarily rare, threatened, endangered turtles. The recommendation from the department was to execute the work during the inactive period for those species. So we would be endeavoring to complete that work in the inactive timeframe, which goes from approximately October 15th through April 15th. Currently, we are trying to structure our construction schedule around some outage timeframe that's necessary for other circuits on our system. At this time, we're targeting kind of the heart of winter. We're looking at January, February timeframe. And with that, I will actually pause this time.
Any questions?
Have it all covered?
All covered.
Have there, have there been, maybe Tracy, you'd know the answer to this. Have, have there been any sightings of any, I was gonna ask about turtles, but in this area, are you aware?
We can't release, given that the turtles are, or those species are considered rare, threatened, endangered.
Yeah.
We can't talk about locations.
Oh, okay.
Per the state.
Okay, that's fine. I'm good with that.
The data is not publicly available.
Interesting.
Okay. So we have, we would have no idea.
So there is witness protection for?
The thing that's really kind of difficult with turtles is that a lot of people can go and hump them down and collect the collection and then sell them.
Forget it. It makes sense.
We try really hard not to discuss, you know, any sightings or anything like that. We don't need to.
Gwen.
I don't know, we've never been told that before.
That's good information.
Because we always, I always ask, but.
Yeah, the, the recommendation was largely predicated on the, you know, the likelihood that there would be turtles in and around or near vicinity to the project site due to the presence of suitable habitat.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm fine. That's fine.
And the last question. I'll do that, she's got an answer.
Yeah.
And with respect to, to rare turtles, all of our, at our construction kickoff meeting, our contractors and all project personnel are trained on identification, safe handling procedures, and all the best management practices that we're issued.
And who to contact.
Who to contact if they do see.
Things like that.
Okay.
Does the town get a report when you're all done?
A report of?
Of what was done and, yeah, everything was, you know, to tell us everything on the plan.
Of course, yeah, we can.
But do we, I'm just curious, do we, is there any follow-up?
That is certainly something that we would be amenable to. We like to keep our host communities very happy. You know, oftentimes, we would, we would bring up planning boards, conservation commissions to a site visit post-construction. We would certainly be amenable to that.
I'm not asking for it myself. I was just kind of curious if that's part of the process.
It certainly can be.
But the answer is no. It can be.
Well, I mean.
I would think it should be.
The, the poles, I'll call them if that's the right thing, are in your purview that you inspect on some regular basis, I suspect, more than once every 50 years.
Yeah. Yeah, they're inspected at least annually.
So no one from the town really comes back, though, right? You guys just kind of self-monitor, you do your thing. And then you complete your work, and your permit expires, more than likely?
So the statutory permit by notification is our, our shortest-term permit, it's good for one year after issuance.
Okay.
Can't remember off the top of my head, I think that was issued like a week or two ago. So we'll, we'll be well within that timeframe should we have to go in and do any touch-up work.
And that's through DES, just to clarify.
Makes sense.
Which, which agency?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
I know there are, I don't know if in this particular area, but there's like bike trail and snowmobile. There's a lot of recreational activity on this corridor. Do you coordinate with like any kind of like organized group to kind of alert people or put up signage with regard to the work?
So this project scope does not overlap or otherwise impact any recreational trails. This is in a Eversource-controlled easement. Like I mentioned, it's, it's gated, so there is no, you know, truly, you know, public, public lands over there. I think you're referring to the pass scope that was over off of Watson Road.
Yeah.
The town forest and, yeah, so.
Yeah, I've heard people do kind of use, like, people have biked from here to like the high school.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Happens all the time.
I've never done.
Yep. Yeah, we, we do coordinate where, where we do overlap those recreational facilities.
So because those are public trails, but people may be using them anyway, do you put, you put construction signs up, right?
Oh, yeah.
So they'll be noticed.
Yeah, there will be signage, and there will certainly be, especially where we're, where we're working, you, you won't be able to miss us.
The poles are big.
Some big toys out there.
Yeah.
And I know you did well.
So you, you met with Conservation Commission and certainly have their letter. Are any of those a problem to your work?
I'm sorry, can you?
Any of the recommendations from the Conservation Commission? Following best management practices in the shoreland buffer zone, maintaining the forested buffer in the condition that it is in now and not contribute additional nitrogen to the district such as from use of fertilizer.
Yeah, it's a previous level.
We're in the wetland.
I read the wrong one.
They didn't have any conditions.
They didn't have anything. They did not.
It's nothing.
They did not object. They have no objections.
Okay. I'm just trying to.
Here.
I see. Oh, no objection, I thought.
Yeah, so that's more typical of what we see from the Conservation Commission. Also is not, in the prior one, they were in support, which language-wise is not typical of just what they say.
Yeah.
And this is more standard. View the application, have no objections to issuance of the conditional use permit as presented.
Right.
Signed by Kristin Murphy, without going through the whole thing, so.
Wrong script.
That's okay. So, so that's more standard. But again, we do respect what they say. If there was, if they had more input, we would be putting weight on it.
Thank you for keeping the chair straight.
Do my best.
Okay.
Moving out of practice for a couple of months.
Right, that's true.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, sure.
Okay. What do you all say? After reviewing the criteria for a shoreland conditional use permit, I move at the request of Eversource Energy, planning board case number 25-8, for a conditional use permit be approved.
Second.
Any? Ready to vote on that?
Ready to vote.
Okay. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it?
All right. Fuck with your project. Thanks for coming in. Take care of those turtles.
Whether they're there or not.
I know, they weren't really there. Shh.
Okay, we're gonna go back to minutes.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Minutes, June 12th and September 11th. June 12th, okay.
Mr. Chair, you want to do the sidewalk once tonight, too, or are you gonna wait?
Hear what she asked?
We might as well do that one.
About the sidewalk?
We all got it.
I think you should do the sidewalk, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you got it minutes now. I've never seen such detailed minutes after a sidewalk. We usually have a high time figuring out who went. Did we have one? What was the day again?
Because you have to sign a paper.
Rumor has it that some of our minutes are not as complete as they should.
I think I heard that rumor.
So I'm trying to put a good foot, foot forward.
Ah. And I don't think that's a reflection on any staff people. I think that's.
We've always taken attendance and have discussed the sidewalks as they've been there. So, yeah, sure, we can approve those, too. But let's start with the 12th of June.
Okay, I'm not recused from that because I recused from that meeting.
Yep.
Marty and I. Oh.
I wasn't there.
I think after 60 days.
This goes back to our Willie Creek Company.
No one has an answer?
Yeah. Meeting. That we. I'm moving the, their fourth bill to the secretary.
Did you get a motion to approve this?
Oh, not yet. Did you want to make that up?
I was wondering why no one was talking.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that the minutes from June 12th, 2025 be approved.
Okay, is a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Anybody have any?
Changes?
Changes? Corrections?
I, I have a couple of things. I, of course, I recuse myself for this, but I, there's a couple of things here I can, I can note. Do you, do you want me to say them or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Number one, throughout the entire thing, Robbie Creek Road is misspelled. It's, it's, it's two Ls, not, not one. I think at one, at one point under the first, first time it's mentioned, it has two Ls.
Which number?
It's throughout, throughout the entire notes.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it needs two Ls instead of one.
Oh, yeah. Good catch. Where you live there.
The other thing I would say, and just, I know this as, again, I'm recused, I'm not making decisions here, but I know this from the residents who have been waiting for these notes, one of the conditions is unclear. And seeing that Aaron made these conditions, maybe he could clarify it. The condition is.
Line again, please.
Line 382.
382. It would be on this page right here.
It says minimize impact on Building A during the post-construction and require applicant to meet with existing condominium owners to satisfy their concerns. How do we know their concerns are satisfied?
Well...
How do we know? I don't think I got into that, but...
Are you going to have, would you have organized a meeting of homeowners, a committee, and they would meet and then you'd know?
Well, again, I, so I know certain things because I...
I didn't require, I, I can, you're asking me, right?
I'm asking you.
Okay, so I would tell you, my intent was, number one, I would always go defer to the video versus the written minutes, because I do find sometimes the minutes are abbreviated versus the actual video. But as I, as I recall, what I, my intent there was, was to require the meeting. Not necessarily to say, at the meeting, the owners come up with 17 things to make everything brand-new, and now they got to do it. My intent was to require the meeting, so that, to require communication.
Okay.
Does that make that clear, Marty?
I think your reference to Building A was, the point was made, I made it, was that at Building A, we were asking that it be power washed after construction.
Yeah.
Because it's going to get dirty.
Yeah.
And that was one of the items that was on our list, and we've talked with the, the developer, and he said he's, he's going to try to work with us on the list, but he's not going to, he's not going to do anything, or definitively tell us anything until he gets his final approvals and gets through the town process. So this is kind of a, you know, what comes first?
Sure.
So all the, the residents are just looking at this and saying, how do, how are you going to know whether we're satisfied or not?
And...
I mean, again, my, my condition was to require a meeting.
Not to say...
Not to necessarily do everything that the owners come up with, because the owners could be unreasonable.
Yeah, that's not a fair reason.
So I don't think that, I know that was not in my heart, to say, hey, here you go, Building A, here you go to satisfy you, so come up with your wish list, ah, we want to, we want a cupola on top of our building, I mean...
Again, I, I thought this, this Building A came only relative to the, the point about the power washing.
Power washing, but people brought up other things as well, I heard them at least.
Yeah.
But they, those were all the buildings, those were all three buildings.
Sure.
Building A was...
I thought Building A, I think the reason I put Building A in there was because I thought Building A was going to likely be the most impacted.
Okay, okay.
So, and, but I don't know, Marty, if it will require power washing, you know, it might, it probably will.
You shouldn't say...
But that's my opinion.
Right.
So, I mean, if, if we should change to say to meet with the existing condominium owners in an effort to satisfy their concerns, maybe that's more clear. I'm not trying to take the applicant off the hook, but I'm also trying not to put them in a position where they can be taken advantage of, you know?
Right.
So, you know, I'm trying to walk that line.
Got you.
I mean, the condition is what the condition is, and this isn't necessarily the condition, this is just the minutes.
Correct.
So...
That's true.
So really, the, the, the condition is what's documented in the application, in the approved application, so I think the language should be taken from that rather than trying to figure it out from the minutes.
That's probably the condition, but I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a good point that Jen's making.
Would that be different than what's on here, though?
It is in the condition.
I mean...
You got a lawyer?
That should be accurate.
No, seriously. It's special.
That's what our...
I don't want to get into that.
That's because it's going to be a court document.
Yeah.
That's why we have to take meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, it is the tape, but it should be, yeah, it should be the same. When you get down to that level of conditions, it shouldn't be inaccurate. It, I'm sure it has been, I'm sure it could be.
Yeah.
And do you think you said to satisfy their concerns? I mean, should he listen to it again and just make sure it reflects the actual words from the meeting that you spoke? I mean, that really does...
All I can say is the residents were looking at the draft.
I think that's exactly what I said.
Okay.
But I actually think, I'm trying to remember, did Barb circle back on these conditions, on this plan? There was a plan recently that she circled back and asked me for a bunch of the conditions, and I'm trying to remember if this was the meeting or not.
I think this was it, because I think you just brought it up, and there weren't enough people at one of the meetings...
Yeah.
Who were here to give the vote.
To remember, to remember, okay.
And that's why it first got pushed off, and then you, you had...
Yeah, and I went back through my notes to actually give it to her, yeah.
It's been a while, so my memory...
So that's probably exactly what I said, put on there, but... That would be my opinion right now, but I would have to listen to the tape to be 100% sure. And I think I said that to her, too, when I gave her my notes.
Yeah.
I said, those are my notes, but...
We, I mean...
Well, that would make Marty happy if that is exactly what you said.
Well, I mean...
To satisfy their concerns.
We can't add conditions on to what...
No, we're just trying to make sure...
Well, no, it says meet, though.
It does say meet.
It says meet, it doesn't say do a litany of activities.
Right.
And that is what I meant, was meet.
And I don't even know if you can tell them that. Was that a condition of the approval?
Yeah.
Yeah, when you're all done, meet with the homeowners?
It was not when you're all done, it was during the process.
During and post-construction, it says.
It was a condition of the approval. Yeah, it was, weren't you there?
No, it wasn't at that meeting.
Oh, you missed that one. Yeah, no, it was a condition, John, because...
We could pull the letter...
You know, it felt like it, I felt some validity to some of their concerns, so I wanted to make sure there was at least communication going on there. Because to me, that's pretty important, and I don't know that it always happens. I think there's, you know, you want to believe everybody's trying to do it the right way, but...
Yeah, but if nothing comes of that, don't be surprised.
Right. But the meeting part, you know, that, to me, if they completely blow them off from even meeting or having communication, then I think they have a place to turn with that, they can come back to us or staff and at least express that, because a lot of these people come before us more than once.
True.
Well, the other thing, too, is to ask Carol to find the actual letter, approve the letter.
Sure.
And see how those two compare, could do that.
Yes. So we're going to table them again?
Well, you must have signed this by now, right?
I signed the letter, yes.
But not, no.
But whether that...
But you signed, you signed the letter with the conditions on it?
Yes.
Approving plan.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, that's what's going to take precedent, not what's in the minutes, honestly, like Jen said.
Pull the letter and just see.
If it's on.
And number 16.
Right.
And is that available to the public?
Yes, it's a recorded plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that would be the thing that would take precedent, Marty, I think ultimately... I, I can't, I'm trying to think of a case I can remember where there's been a problem between what we do here and what ends up on the plan, and I can't think of one where we've had a problem with it. So there shouldn't be a discrepancy there, I don't, I cannot think of a time when there has been. I know sometimes we have a long way to get from the bend all the way to where we're trying to go, but usually by the time it gets to the plan, we've hashed it out.
Yeah.
And really wordsmithed it at the plan, so sometimes, and, you know, and he doesn't usually get into that discussion in the minutes about, you know, because sometimes I'll bumble words, wording a condition, and then I finally come up with it, get it out, get it out, you know? It's why a lot of times I try to take notes on that when I'm coming up with conditions. So I think that's, if your question was, what did I say, I think that is what I said, and I expressed already what I meant.
So what are we going to do with these?
I think they're, I don't see a problem with them.
So can I make a suggestion that John, and he was Jen's second, they got to withdraw because we amended them after they made their motions?
We didn't amend it, I think.
We haven't amended it.
Oh, Willie Creek.
We did. Well, if you're going to take Marty's recommendation for the word will, right, they're going to be amended, either that or if you're not going to take that recommendation, then you haven't amended them.
Yes, we have amended them.
Okay.
Our team's recommendation.
Sorry?
Yeah, I'll draw on a second.
I'm just trying to make sure we've got, yeah.
Do you want to withdraw your...
We're usually supposed to get a motion a second before you stop talking about amendments.
But you motioned to accept them as they were.
Because typically, we do...
A discussion, okay. I'll withdraw.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to make another motion?
So we need to table this again?
No, no. I think everyone said that if I understood you guys right, we're all satisfied, you're all satisfied, not, not mine. But John just asked to motion as amended.
Okay.
So what was the exact amendment?
Willie Creek.
Spell it wrong.
Willie was spelled wrong, except for the first time.
When it's your address, you know what you said, right?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 12th, no, 17th, I can't see when that was.
12.
No, it is the 12th, okay, 2025, with a correction to the spelling of Willie Creek or Wiley Creek.
Which one is it?
I call it Wiley.
Wiley, okay.
I, I messed it up, I say one L.
I say Willie.
It's Wiley Coyote.
It's Wiley with Ls.
If it was one L, it'd be Wiley. All second.
Okay, moved in second. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
One abstention, okay.
Two.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Marty and Nancy. Ooh, that was fun.
Now, Martin, September 11th, why don't you take these minutes there?
Okay. Any, any input, Gwen?
Nope, I have two.
I don't, I have nothing.
Nancy, any input?
I do. On line 187 on page 5 of 7, Brandy has spelled V R A and D Y, there's an L in there, and she spoke tonight, so I'm absolutely sure I have that right. And then line 192, it's got Robert V, the owner, and it's, it's Rob Ficara, V, I'm sorry, F I C A R A, who owns...
Robert F, so it's Robert F.
Senior, if you want to know.
Thank you.
Right. And that's all I have.
Can I just add on 187? So in addition to adding an L to Brandy's name, the, her, her last name small should be capitalized.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you get the one on line 58?
I didn't. 58.
Line 58, it says Ms. Hilton, I think it's Mr. Hilton?
Oh, it is, good, yeah. Mr. Hilton, Attorney Hilton.
Well, I think we should just start calling him Miss.
Calling Marty Mary.
He got better at that.
Messing up.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chair? Since I just gave you responsibility for this one? Just thinking. Yeah?
Somebody make a motion?
I just asked you.
Want me to make it?
If you'd like to make one, okay. I move to... I guess it's me.
Okay.
But I move to accept the meeting minutes of September 11th, 2025, as amended.
Second.
One of you said, okay. It's a tie in the second.
Okay, those in favor, please hit the cap by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, I abstain.
Oh, dear. I think it was midnight or something.
You're on my bad side.
Yeah.
What are these minutes we got from today?
Would you like that?
Not yet, we have the site walk ones now.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, go ahead now.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I got to tell you, I think it's the first time we've had those.
Yeah, it's supposed to, I can remember.
Yeah, I was very surprised to come in and see them sitting.
Yeah. I don't want to set a precedent, but maybe, okay.
So the only thing I'm going to say on that, in the future, when we schedule a site walk, you're going to have to have time to write something. Doesn't have to be necessarily typed, but, you know, if we're going to do that, because sometimes we've talked, we've had it right before our meetings, so it's unlikely to get it that quick, I don't think that's the new bar.
What are you talking about?
If we have a 6 o'clock site walk in a 7 o'clock meeting, you aren't getting minutes like you did tonight.
No, no.
That's what I'm talking about. It's not the new bar. Don't get used to it, John.
Okay.
I, I make a motion to pass the site walk minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, and cap by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I abstain, I wasn't...
Ah, one abstention.
Okay.
No.
Extension of conditional approval to us.
All right, we have an extension of, of a, of a request for an extension. Why the heck is that?
I think I have it right here.
Well, anyway.
Here, you need it?
I can't recall what this project was.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I couldn't either, I...
We've extended it once, apparently.
Eight Commerce Way.
It says the second, eight Commerce.
What's the business?
They didn't really...
Come on, come on, boy, now, somebody's got to remember this.
I do.
Have their client see Marine Dynamics Realty.
You don't have any more information, do you?
No, I looked it up today, and honestly, I apologize, I don't remember the details, but I think it had to do with at least one office building. I think one has been built, but there was a second one that was supposed to be built, and I believe, because I spoke to Barb about this, and we haven't had any communication from the applicant, so we don't know any details, but I think that she said that they're building know any details. But I think that she said that they're building a second building, and that's what they're asking the extension for.
So one's, half the project's been completed?
I think so.
Something like that?
I think that's up on Industrial Drive.
It's in that area.
Beyond the northeast lantern, I think.
Might be.
Or we put in, I remember.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you expect them to provide some kind of reason for this? I mean, did you just send a letter in without some rationale?
Well, usually first or second letter, I mean, no reason we can't ask them to come in.
No, it's just a little vague. They couldn't, I don't know.
I mean, I, I would not blame the applicant on that one. I would think that's us not recalling what that's for. You know what I mean? That's, I do agree that they really want to get that voted on tonight. They should be here, though. I mean, that's part of it. Do you know when it expires?
I, I do not.
Okay.
But what is the date on this?
It said it was October 12th, 2023.
So probably next month.
Could be they could come in next month. Well, actually, when do we need?
Respectfully request a one-year extension for Planing Board 23. This was at the October 12th, 2023. It does say it that way, and so it was, didn't, doesn't say, it was approved at that meeting, but I'm going to, it's not a good idea to assume, but I'm going to assume what they're trying to say in that sentence is that they were approved on October 12th, 2023, originally. So.
They could come in on the ninth.
See, I mean, could, could we just give them a three-month extension until we get clarification?
I, I think you can do that. I think that our practice is one year.
One year is.
Kind of like a no-brainer, right? Second one, we do get a little more critical of typically, potentially.
We have.
If they're making progress on it, if they're actually, if they've actually built half the project, aren't they vested at this point anyway?
Oh, yeah.
Potentially. I would have to see the details of what the project is.
We don't want to scare them off.
If they've done half of it, though, they don't even need to do this, but this is just extra covering their bases. But if they've done half of it, if they're halfway complete, the one-year approval is not to necessarily complete your project.
No.
It's the start.
The start, yes. Get the money together, get the whatever.
Right.
Then they have so many years and.
Usually it's another year to complete it.
How many years do we normally approve?
Usually. Depends on the scope of the project, obviously, right?
Thank you. Yeah, I, that was something I thought about when I read it.
Generally depends on the scope of the project.
And I need to get back to looking it up.
Do we approve only for one year? Don't we initially approve for three years?
No, it's usually one.
Just one, except.
Unless they ask for certain things, like we had one recently.
One, two, three, that's.
Which wanted a 13-year approval, I think it was.
And none of the projects we approve are that big that they couldn't get started and finished in a year. Now, they may.
That's not true.
Well, no, they, I'm not saying that they, they could if everything fell into place.
I'd say Phillips Exeter's done a lot of projects that would never be done in a year, but I agree with what you're saying, most of them.
Most of them, yes. And that we never.
Well, and obviously, these subdivisions.
You're not finished, you're not going to, we're not going to extend it. We'd never do.
But the subdivisions that we approve all the time are not done in a year, you know, multi-lot subdivisions. It's really just getting vested. So, I mean, it sounds like they're vested anyway, but I don't know. None of us really recalling it, it's kind of funny to just grant it. Maybe we should push it on to our next meeting.
It came on the ninth, that's before their district.
There's nothing, there's nothing in for a meeting on the night at this point.
Okay.
Oh, there's not. So you may not have a meeting?
Are we open on that night?
You are, you have no new applications.
I don't think you want to come back with just this.
It's approving.
There's a reason to pass this. There's your reason right there. That's your compelling reason to pass this, so we don't have to meet next.
Have a night off.
All right.
October 9th, that. Is there anybody who's not going to give it?
No.
The motion?
Okay. Does somebody have a problem with it?
No, I just would like to know what it is, but is it necessary?
Right, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to grant it.
And I will second it.
Okay.
For one year, right?
Yeah, one year.
One year is.
Yeah, we do.
Yep.
One year from, from this date.
So October 26th, oh, this date.
This date, so I would go, just to keep it consistent.
Okay.
Do we have, we actually have a motion in here? I don't think we do. All right.
Do you want that from this date or from the date of the actual expiration?
I would do it from the date of the expiration.
Okay.
Yes.
October 12th, 2026.
Yep. Yes, yes.
Do we have to withdraw our motions instead of over? Are we okay? We're okay?
You are okay, yes.
So I make a motion to extend the approval of Planning Board Case Number 23-13 to expire on October 12th, 2026.
Second.
So moved and seconded? Here a second or not?
I'll second.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're, it's not, I withdraw my.
It's okay. I already seconded.
Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. Okay, Commerce, no, no, regular member, okay, we.
Yeah, so did the letter go to the Select Board for that, to appoint Marty, the Select Board?
There is a board, a letter that will be in Barbara's hands tomorrow morning.
Wonderful, because they're meeting on Monday night. That's why I was wondering.
Get that all set.
Thank you.
I mean, do we need to discuss Marty a little more in light of your comments?
I would think so.
If we go into a session without it first.
I do want to bring up, mostly to Carol, hey, we need to get that attorney's letter. I called last week about it regarding another case that we asked for legal opinion, and we still don't have it, and it's a pretty complicated matter. I know for me personally, when I have three or four attorneys arguing in a room, and I don't have an attorney representing me, representing the town, I feel a little undergunned.
Yeah, we have discussed this a couple of times in the office. It's been tomorrow, it will be two weeks since I reached out to her and have not heard anything back yet. I spoke to Melissa about it this evening, in fact, so she said I should nudge her tomorrow and remind her that we have a date of continuance, and we need to know whether or not she's going to be able to do this.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. Stay on them because it's a pretty important one, and we're already beyond the time to act.
And they only agreed to the extension to the date we gave them, so if we don't have that letter and can't read it, and what if we have questions and we wanted to go into a non-public, you know? We really need movement on this.
We do. We do. And I, and I'm going to impose upon the board again to really do your best to work through it on your own as well, because it's not that simple. And easements aren't that simple in general, and I would also say in general, when you have different opinions from different attorneys representing different interests, it can really muddy it up. So you have to, I, I know for me personally, I step back, just read it, try to read it at what it is, and, and, and keep it simple. Because the other challenge I think we face is when you have attorneys in the room representing different interests, they generally are representing that interest aggressively and going beyond, but I would consider reasonable interpretation of what they're trying to present to us. So we get a lot of noise, and I think there's been a lot of noise in that hearing personally. So I really think it is important for us to have that.
When that opinion comes out from our attorney, is it going to be distributed to all of us right away?
It will be. Yeah, and it will be, and it will be confidential as well. And, I mean, if possible, I would expect that we're going to want them here.
I would think so.
So, I mean, you know, if they're not doing a great job of getting us an opinion even, it's, makes me a little concerned at the moment, but.
Right. And to have the opinion just before the meeting is not good either.
No, it's not.
It doesn't give us a chance to review it and think on it.
Right.
Exactly.
And do our own research, too. There's a lot of deeds, a lot of deeds.
Which is what I'm going to impress upon her tomorrow when I contact her again.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I have the second question unanswered.
Master Plan Discussion?
Marty?
Let's see, we're, we're meeting next, next Thursday morning.
Yep.
15:50, yeah, we'll get things going, so. All right. Any field modifications?
We had a minor change for 46 Main Street, just a little tiny shift of parking area. So they're moving ahead with that, and we've had a request for a field modification for a utility pole, and of course, I've already forgotten which project this is, but at any rate, we're waiting for a revised plan from them before Paul and I review it and, and discuss it. By next meeting, I'll remember which project that is. We've had so many pre-con meetings lately that they're all getting a little mixed up in my head.
Understandably.
Land use regulations review, what's that all? It's not, it's only time, yeah, is it or?
It's always on here.
Yeah, okay. Performance guarantees, has anybody else gotten any money back? Or I think, I thought we're finished.
We had that one request from 78 Linden Street, and we responded to them about the process and still have not heard back, and that's been, I think I reported on this twice now, so five weeks.
Third time's the charm. Yeah.
Here's the best part, any announcements? There's nothing on the agenda for our next meeting, and there's not time to.
So there is no meeting.
So there is no meeting.
Well, okay, you're right. What if we have questions? What if we get this legal opinion on Monday? Right? I mean, can we, I'd like the opportunity to be able to speak to this attorney if I have any questions once I get their opinion. Am I the only one here that would like that opportunity?
Truthfully, in the past, we.
It's never been us.
We have done that.
We could organize a Zoom with the attorney.
He's done. And we typically don't see the letter till we.
We've gotten a letter ahead of time. We have gotten a letter via email ahead of time, and then we've not, we've not individually met with the attorney.
No.
We've had the attorney available. Sometimes we meet with them before the hearing. We might have a 6:30.
Downstairs.
Their start, and then you plan to have the regular meeting start at seven, gives us about half an hour to have some give and take with the lawyer. And that's probably the way we.
Well, that's how we've done in the past, but we have an opportunity, if we can get the opinion from them, to not have it that rushed, is my point.
Sure.
So Carol mentioned having a Zoom. Is that something that we need to notify the public about?
It's not, it's a non.
It's confidential. So, I mean.
They can't notify on that. I think we can have a meeting like that because of what it is. I, per law, right? We can meet in conference. We've had to do that mostly because of appeals or stuff that is in our realm that's in court.
So is this board any different than the Select Board? When we have to do something like that, we come upstairs, we gabble in, the chair asks for a motion under RSA, whatever it is, with going into non-public. We vote on it, the clerk has to do a roll call vote, and then we gabble up and go downstairs into non-public.
You don't need to do that when you're meeting with your, with your counsel.
Okay.
That is confidential.
That's right.
Okay.
So that does not count as a meeting.
Okay.
We've done it, it's always been part of the meeting. We just, because we're coming in anyway.
We gab, we've gabbed out and gone down.
Yeah, downstairs.
Right, right, that's right.
We have been in a meeting, gabble.
Not every time.
For non-public, that's appropriate.
Because we've, we've started down there before.
That's what I mean, well, it's the night of the meeting.
Exactly.
We start, that's, we've done, when, again, it's before the meeting, we're meeting with our attorney, and that does not require anything.
Right, okay.
So we have that choice. We could, we could schedule or know that we may be called.
Well, I mean, I, I guess to me, we're allowed to discuss this a little bit or not?
Yeah, because it's procedure.
Well, to me, though, it's kind of, there's not 17 issues with a seizement issue. That's really what the discussion is about to me. Is can an abutter block it? Can an abutter block it? Does it fall into the abutter to the left, right, the manor? Are they, do they have to allow them to use their space as an access or not? Can it be blocked back and forth or not? Can the parking be counted towards their required parking or not? And there's not about, for me personally, there's not like 17 movement things. So I know I have in my mind formulated a list of questions that I would want clarification on, and they're not that substantial, because I'm trying to keep them related to the case. So for me personally, I could meet beforehand. If we have the letter ahead of time, it will help me clarify that, and then you meet beforehand, I think I would like the attorney available, I think.
But if there's no meeting in two weeks, there is no.
I'm talking about for the actual hearing.
The 23rd.
Yeah.
So I don't know what I have questions, because I haven't seen the attorney's opinion, so.
You must know what questions you have, Nancy.
Of course I do, but I don't have their opinion, so I would want to be able to.
There might be an answer to one.
Read their opinion, and I might have more questions after that. I don't know.
I mean, regardless, I'd like to get their opinion in writing prior to meeting the hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Well, that's what we said.
Yeah, so if you do it at night, as long as we get it, you know, a week before, that's fine. I'm okay with that.
No, that's what we said. That's what we usually do. Usually get their opinion, usually the week of, I mean.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Timeframe wise, right?
But if they could get it to us as early as possible.
Right, exactly.
Certainly advance that, when we talk.
It doesn't usually come in the packet. It's usually supplemental on an email. I mean, sometimes it does, but often it's not.
It can't be in a packet.
So when it, when it comes, then we have a chance to review what they're saying.
Yes.
You probably already have some of your own questions or concerns about that issue. See if they address them or not, and if they do, does that answer you and satisfy you? Or does it, like Nancy brought up, does it bring up more questions? And that's why you want them available, not just this one static.
Right, explain that to me better.
Right.
Okay. So I think, I think Carol can follow up on her, after she gets a response from the attorney. If they don't think they can get something to, or if they think they can get something to us prior to the meeting, we have the potential.
That's really important.
I know it is. Oh, I totally agree with you. But we have the option of having a Zoom meeting.
Right.
Or coming, and that way the attorney could be there. I don't know where she is, but is she up in Laconia? I don't know.
You want a response at least a week prior to the meeting.
Yes.
And then you want her here either in person or over Zoom.
Yeah.
For the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And possibly beforehand, so that you all could have a huddle with her with any issues that you have before the meeting starts.
Thank you.
I would really rather have her here in person. Do not want to do it on Zoom.
Yeah, in person is definitely better.
I'm just saying as a.
We may not get that specific attorney, we'd get another one from the same organization that would provide that. That's what happened last time or two.
For me, it's ideal when we have the letter ahead of time.
Yep.
And then they are, meet with us half an hour before our regularly scheduled meeting, and then we go into our meeting and they're here. So if we have to break out again, we can.
Right.
But hopefully we can accomplish what we need to with the letter ahead and 30 minutes to work together in private.
The last ditch effort is on Zoom that way. That's not my priority, but it was just an alternative.[1743.32]